I'll call the Lakeland Shores City Council Meeting, October 5th, 2017, 6:30. To order, please. Could we have a roll call, Kim?
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Uh, councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Bischoff?
Here.
Mayor Zeller?
Here. If you'd join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item here is to adopt the agenda. I'd like to make one change. Uh, I don't see Tom is working in the other room, but um, I think with Tom Nidzwicki's resignation that we need to appoint our new treasurer and also to appoint Tom as deputy treasurer until year end. So if we could add that maybe um, in item 4B. With that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
We'll move to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Carries. Uh, consent agenda. We've got two items. Approve September 6th, 2017 council meeting minutes, and item B, approve monthly claims and financial reports. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I second the motion. I beat you to it already, sorry.
I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Carries. We have our Washington County Sheriff Deputy present and would like to jump ahead in our schedule and welcome you up and have you make your report and then we can let you get on with your evening.
Good evening. Um, there's only one call, I think, for service this month, so do you guys have anything for us?
Nothing. We like that. Nice and quiet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Appreciate your time. Our next item of business is public comments and we do have Mr. Bob Lind on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Lind, would you mind approaching the podium? Welcome.
Um, actually, I'm here just to uh, um, tentatively put a purchase agreement in for a commercial property um, just north of um, whatever that bar is called down there.
Shiners?
Shiners, yeah. And um, I guess my question's um, for you guys, basically the, the size of the building that you would allow, um, the setbacks, um, going from commercial to residential, um, the entrance, and then uh, well and septic. Is there any plans um, to have well and septic run through there or would we have to have uh, well and septic?
So we have city water available, uh, and there more than likely is a, a cut off the main line to that lot, uh, but there's no sewer, so it's private septic system down here.
Okay.
So if there's not a wall on that property already, you would be required to connect to water and you'd be required to put in a septic system.
Okay. And then as far as the entrance, um, the way Tom was describing it to me, it, we would come off of uh, one of the side streets, um, and go in the back of the lot and not off of the main street. Is that correct?
Oh, this is-
Tom Johnson?
Tom Johnson.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, there's a designated alley there.
So, just north of Second Street, um, there's that property that typically has some cars parked. It's that lot behind. In fact, there's a couple of just for sale by owner signs up on it right now. And it's my understanding it is zoned commercial.
Correct, yeah.
And you're wanting a commercial application?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I believe you've had some communication with the clerk in terms of what the setbacks are and the total amount of impervious surface you can have.
Well, them are the questions um, that I'm, that I'm asking right now. I, I don't know, um, as far as the setbacks go. It says, um, you know, from commercial to residential, um, it says 35 feet.
Right.
Um, which would put the building right smack dab in the middle of the lot.
Okay.
Which I would like to have it more um, on the south end of the lot. Um, and, and just for rain purposes only, for water. I mean, for when the water runs off, it's gonna go, you know, south to north. Um, so it wouldn't be running toward the building, it'd be running away from the building at, at the entrance.
Okay.
Um, and that's the only reason for that. Um, and then to have it right in the middle, I guess wouldn't make sense for either neighbor, uh, because they would, they would both um, have to deal with, you know, both sides of the building. So I, I just uh, would like to uh, you know, find out what I need to do, uh, to move it, uh, to have the back of the building facing south and uh, the front of the building facing north.
So I'm just wondering what the best way to proceed might be for, for you and for the city. And what we do a lot of times is we'll call a pre-construction meeting. And that's just a real informal meeting, but we would ask John to attend, uh, Kim would attend, um, and we would just sit down and see if we couldn't work through some of those details, uh, before you make an application. If the setback is 35 feet, a transition from residential to commercial, and you're wanting something less than that, then you'd have to go through the variance process, similar to uh, we have an application this evening that's going through that process. Um, so that, that would be the process. We'd certainly be willing to sit down with you. Um, you and I have spoken in the past and uh, you may want to tell the council a little bit about your business. Um, I think our community, you know, would welcome a business like yours. It's just a matter of if we can get it to work on that lot or, or if we're just trying to get too much on a, on a small parcel. But, so maybe if you wouldn't mind, would you just tell them a little bit about your business?
Yeah, well, right now, um, I have a, a 6,000 square foot building and I use probably half of that, um, well, maybe two thirds. But anyway, I have a limo bus company and I have a landscape company and a construction company. Um, so it would be um, very little traffic. Um, basically, you know, s- inside storage, um, for the limo buses. And they're, they're not big buses by any means. They're, um, the biggest one is like, uh, about 32 feet. Um, and there's only four of them. Um, and again, the traffic for the buses, they come and go, uh, basically on Saturdays is the, the main uh, time for them. And then uh, the landscaping, we usually start around seven or eight and we're done, you know, by six or seven at night. Um, but otherwise, there wouldn't be, you know, a whole lot going on down there. Um, just uh, looking for some storage, really.
Okay. So everything would be primarily inside?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any comments or?
I guess I'm trying to look at this, which ways, so you want these doors going south or the back of the building going south?
I think, I think the entrance comes in off the east side of the lot. So I think you have that positioned correctly. This would be uh, 18.
County Road 18.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think years ago when we did the Tom Johnson, we tried to get a driveway in off the county and the county won't let us when they redid the road.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, that's not a big issue. Um, I just thought, you know, if, if we could come in off the, the main street, you know, it might be a little more respectful for the neighbor on each side.
Yeah, there's an easement there for that, so.
Is that Third Street? That's not there?
Uh, could be. We'd have to look at the plot there.
Yeah, it could be.
And the neighbors are well aware of it, too, so.
Well, the one guy has-
And that's the other thing I was gonna say, is that it might make some sense, uh, if you decide to move forward, that we have an informal, informal meeting with the, the neighbors.
Okay.
Um, 'cause it is a little unusual that that lot's zoned commercial, given, you know, it's primarily surrounded by residential.
Right.
I think the more we can communicate with them, the better off for everyone.
Okay.
So, uh, I don't know if we're hearing any consensus other than we would welcome a business such as yours, if it's just a matter of if we can get it to work on that particular property or not.
Should I call you directly then or just talk to Kim?
Kim.
Okay.
Kim could coordinate, uh, setting up a meeting. John, can you think anyone else that would need to be there for a pre-con?
A pre-application meeting?
Yeah.
Um, you know, it really is not, not, it's not in the, the Riverway District, so really like the normal people we'd invite, DNR.
Right.
Sort of thing. Um, the only one I would suggest maybe is um, Mike Eisenstein from the WMO.
Okay.
As they have jurisdiction regardless.
Sure.
So he might be somebody to invite.
Yep. So the WMO would deal with runoff issues and erosion control and things of that nature?
Okay.
So we can invite him to attend as well?
Sure.
And we can, depending on everyone's schedule, I mean, we can probably do that next week or the following week?
Oh, great. Okay.
Okay.
Well, there, do you know that there is an easement off Second Street there, too? Between, not come, you don't have to come off Third Street, you come off Second Street, too. There's a-
Yeah.
Designated alley for that lot.
Yep, yep. No, it's Second Street, the, the street between um, the bar and the lot, then?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was talking about.
Okay.
Um, the easement in the back and uh-
Yep.
The guy that has the house right there has his camper park right there.
Yeah.
And uh, so we would just, you know, talk to him and um, I mean, he would probably be the first one that I would like to talk to, just to-
Yep.
You know, have the back of the building facing his house.
I think they operate a home occupation business, so uh, he would probably be sensitive to your effort.
Okay.
But yeah, I think the more people we can talk to, the better neighbors, the better. John, do you have any thoughts?
Where are you located now?
Uh, West Lakeland.
Up near, up near the freeway?
Yep, Manning and 94, correct.
Thank you.
I think that's all we have for you tonight.
Okay.
We'll be happy to set that up for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Yeah, you too.
Were there any other people that would like to make public comment? Do we have anything? Seeing none, we'll move on. Unfinished business. Our first item here is a public hearing. Consideration of Resolution Number 2017-10-01, variance request, 125 Lakeland Shores Road. It's been a while since I've done this. Sorry, recall, I call a public hearing to order. You introduce the application, then we close the public hearing and talk to the applicant and, and address questions and concerns?
Uh, Mayor, council members, it would be my understanding that the staff presentation is made, whose John is going to take care of that.
Okay.
Uh, then there would be some council discussion and then the public hearing would be opened at that point.
So, so do the public hearing second?
Yeah, once the, uh, application's been introduced, that gives the public an opportunity to kind of know what they're responding to in the public hearing, so.
Well, I am rusty on this one. So with that said, let's turn it over to you, John, if you would introduce the application.
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, I um, I'll do a, a brief introduction and then I actually find it pretty helpful usually to have the applicants themselves get up and, and sort of introduce the project as well, because uh, they're gonna be a little more intimately familiar with some of the details and they'll be answering some questions, I imagine, tonight if council may, the council, uh, as the council directs. But briefly, what we have in front of, uh, the council tonight is an application for variance to the setback from bluff line for a property at address 125 Lakeland Shores Road. Uh, you should have a staff report and a variety of other documents probably in front of you tonight. Um, I'll kind of walk through a little bit of the staff report here and then, um, and then ask the applicants to introduce their project and then I can pick up where they leave off and then we can move on to the, to the public hearing. So in short, the proposed project includes a number of, a number of improvements. Uh, they're planning to remodel and plan for a future addition to the existing home to raise the boathouse, to get it further out of the floodplain, and make plans for a future garage. Uh, the addition, proposed additions include a, a, a larger garage attached to the existing principal structure and a future, a master suite addition. And applicants, you can feel free to correct me when, when I turn over you here if I get any of this wrong. So, um, right now, the structure, both structures are non-conforming. Principal structure is non-conforming with respect to the setback to the bluff line. And the, um, the boathouse is non-conforming because it's a, a structure located on the bluff, which has setback issues and is also located in the floodplain. A note for the council's information tonight, um, when this application was first submitted, um, it was fair, it was fairly complete with respect to the principal structure, the raising of the boathouse, um, the, the plans for a future garage and the garage addition and the future ma- master suite. Uh, you'll notice on the plans, if you looked at them ahead of time, that there's also plans for a, a path to be constructed from the upper elevation down to the boathouse. Uh, that was incomplete at the time this application was made. There will be additional approvals required for that. Uh, there are two additional approvals that you won't hear tonight. One is a grading permit for, uh, the path and the other is um, conditional use permit for raising the boathouse. And uh, so what you're really, um, gonna be asked to, to consider tonight is the variance from the setback, uh, the bluff setback. So I think with that, um, I can go through a lot more of this, um, staff report and I will do so, uh, but maybe it would be a good time, if it pleases the mayor, to invite the applicants up to introduce their project.
That'd be great, if somebody'd like to approach. John, for my own clarification, and I should know the answer to this, 'cause I know we, we talked about it. The, the conditional use permit for the potential raising of the structure, the boathouse, um, is that handled at council level or at staff level?
Uh, Mayor, conditional use permit is handled at council level.
Okay.
The grading permit can be issued at staff level, although sometimes in a small community such as this, um, councils prefer to see those as well, and so it would be up to your discretion. But uh, grading permits are frequently approved at staff level.
Okay. All right, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tom Scanlon. I'm the property owner. This is Jennifer Kates. She's with Kates Fine Homes. I'm gonna be the contractor on the project. And first of all, I wanted to thank you guys for taking time to consider the project and let us know if you have any additional questions. If you have questions for me, by all means, fire away.
Okay. I think we have some questions for you. Um, John, you'd asked me for a little bit of clarification, so I happen to know you have some questions. Would you like to lead us off? Can I put you on the spot?
Yeah, I, I know that you put in a septic system earlier in the year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And um, I'm assuming that it's sized for, they usually size it by the number of bedrooms that you're contemplating?
That is correct.
Okay. And this one was sized for what?
Five. Up to five bedrooms.
And it's, my understanding is I've looked at the plans, that your intention is to tear down the existing garage, build a garage of similar size on that same footprint, but go higher. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And correct, and um, you're gonna have some sort of living space above that garage. Is that correct?
Future bonus room, correct.
Future, what kind of room?
Bonus. Just a bonus room over the garage.
Okay. But you don't, you haven't labeled it as to, you're not planning on doing plumbing to it at this time. You're not, uh, you know?
No. The thought would be an office space, potentially.
Okay. And my, the other is, is that as, as the place exists now, how many bedrooms are there?
Three.
And with the, I don't think we'd need to call it a boathouse any longer, since obviously if it was, we wouldn't be talking about what you're planning. Um, so the, the living quarters that are down on the beach, um, it's my understanding that the original owners, the people that built the place in the first place, had lived there for two or three years and then built the place that you're talking about remodeling. Is that correct?
Actually, 10 years.
Did they? Okay. And um, so they had a functional, at least according to the time period that we were living in, uh, at that time, uh, they had a functional bathroom as well as kitchen. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. And it's your idea to maintain that use of the, of the-
Guest house, boathouse?
Guest house, okay. Boathouse, yes.
Yes, correct.
And there's really no room to put a boat in there. Is that correct?
Uh, no.
No.
Well, a very small boat.
Right, yeah. And that would come in from the south entrance, is that correct?
Yeah, and I have no interest in doing that.
Right. And so, right now, um, so that would, that makes four bedrooms, is that correct?
Currently.
Except for that structure's not connected to the septic system.
Correct.
So it's your plan to connect it to the septic system?
The future plans are open. I think right now, I'm looking at focusing on phase one.
Okay.
Which would be the existing structure, but the thought process is come before the council, get everything open and talk about it now.
I think probably I phrased this wrong, so maybe we're talking about opposite things here. The boathouse, guest house is, there's going to be obviously living quarters there. Somebody could sleep there, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And they could have a kitchen and a bathroom. And I'm assuming that the waste product from both the kitchen and the bathroom are going somewhere. Is that correct?
That'd be correct.
And presently, where do they go?
That is a great question, because I have not used that.
Right, okay.
So I don't know where it's plumbed to.
So-
Hopefully the Wisconsin side.
So, yeah, really. Yeah, hopefully not down river towards my house. Um, so, um, it's your intention to hook it up to a, a septic system?
Correct.
Okay. And do you have any ideas to what that involves? I mean, is there a holding tank so that a pump goes on after you get 400 gallons or is there?
It'd be a small tank and then a pump system.
Okay.
Shredder and a pump system.
Okay. And when we talk about a small tank, how, how, I mean, are you gonna bury that? Is that correct, the tank?
Uh, I'm not sure if that would be, I haven't got that far into it, but that would be designed through, you know, the um-
I'm sure the county would help.
The county, absolutely. Whatever.
My understanding of those systems are they're fully enclosed, fully contained. They're small. It's a grinder pump and it-
Instantly.
Sends it up right away.
And uh-
It's not like a, even a 50 gallon. It's more like a 5, 10 gallon.
You got an alarm.
And I don't want to focus too much on the boathouse, guest house.
It's future.
Because as I understand it, we're not answering that question this evening?
Well, the conditional use permit process will revisit the boathouse, at least the elevating of the boathouse.
Okay.
Because that has to be done through conditional use permits.
All right, so we might as well talk about it. It's home tonight.
Yeah, I think, um, I think you need to at least deal with this setback issue, because technically, it, it doesn't comply either with the setback, because it's down on the bluff.
Okay.
It's certainly not 100 feet back from the water line.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so I think it would be my recommendation that in your findings and in your action, that you would include that, um, you know, action on that, that variance as well.
So let's get really specific then, as long as, John, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, John.
Yeah, no problem.
So there's three issues relative to the boathouse. There's the setback, there's the height, and there's the connection to sewer, right? To septic?
Yep.
Okay. So the setback, I mean, it is what it is, right? We just have to acknowledge that it's pre-existing and that he's not changing the encroachment relative to setback?
It's an existing substandard structure in that regard, yeah.
Okay. So that one's relatively easy, yes?
Yeah, as lo- yeah, as long as there's no plans to enlarge it, which there haven't been any of that presented yet, so, you know, it's gonna stay on its current footprint.
Okay. And I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, this council's gonna want that connected to septic. If, if we see our way through approving everything you wanna do, we're clearly gonna want that connected to septic. Is that fair?
Yeah, and you know, we certainly want it connected in the method that you were just indicating would be the preferable method, as compared to something that might have a holding tank of a larger size, that could be, you know, subject to flooding or leak or that type of stuff.
And I, I'm not an expert, but I would just be shocked if we could permit any type of a holding tank in a flood zone. Uh, that would have to be a contained system, wouldn't it, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would be my preference as well.
Right. I mean, odds are that's even above your floor level, so that it can't flood, is my guess.
Right, sure.
Okay. Well, that's an important detail that we would want, you know, a design and clarification on, but, but that would be a condition in my mind.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so then let's talk about height. So as it is right now, it's a, is it a block foundation?
It is.
And then the living portion of that structure currently sits at what elevation? Anyone?
Yes, just a minute, Mayor.
Okay.
Can find that for you.
Um-
And Mayor, council members, I'll jump in while John's looking at that. It was my understanding, um, and certainly up to the council, that a CUP may not necessarily be required for that boathouse, if in fact the, uh, improvements made to it are less than 50% of the value?
So, uh, two questions there. So the boathouse, according to survey, is currently at elevation 693.
Okay.
Which is one foot, incidentally, it's one foot above 100-year flood elevation and it does already comply with your floodplain regulations at that elevation.
Okay. So I think this was the technicality that we ran into. If it's less than a 50% improvement and it's above the floodplain, does it still require a CUP?
Yeah, so, uh, your floodplain ordinance requires a CUP because it's using, it would be using alternative floodproofing methods. And that basically is anything that is not elevating on fill.
Okay.
And that elevating on fill has requirements to go with it as well. So in order to comply with elevation on fill, you'd have to basically put the slab on grade on fill, and then that fill would have to extend out 15 feet perim- around the perimeter of the hall, of the building.
Yeah, no, we're not doing that. That would-
So that kicks it into the alternative floodproofing. There is gonna be, as I understand it, Ms. Kates, I did talk to her a, a couple weeks back, there is gonna be a crawl space that results from this activity. And so that would need to be protected from the flood by using alternative methods, which is typically those flood vents that some of you might be familiar with.
Okay. All right. So then, understanding that you're above the 100-year flood.
Mm-hmm.
What you're proposing is to raise it two courses a block?
Three.
Three courses a block, which would put it at what elevation?
There'd be an additional 24 inches.
So 695?
Yep.
Okay. Can you help us understand the, the thought process there, why you need that extra two feet?
Uh, you know, mostly just for peace of mind, you know? If you're at that elevation, 100-year, windy day, how, you know, how many, how much in waves are you gonna have when you're that close to the water? So that's the thought process, is build it high enough. My home in St. Mary's Point, I did the same thing. I raised the elevation just for peace of mind.
Okay.
So it's more peace of mind than, than anything else.
Okay.
So how old is the foundation now? The existing foundation?
Uh, the structure was built in 1949.
Okay. So that's solid, or?
Yeah, I think Jay looked at it pretty closely.
Yeah, it's a block foundation.
And that's a, a point of clarification. So you would be adding on to that existing foundation?
Correct.
Okay.
Would it be your intention to create any other openings in that foundation other than the one that exists on the south end?
No, just for the, the floodproofing of the vents for the flooding.
So you'd just shore it up and raise the-
Correct, yeah.
And it's your intention, as far as the, you know, it's probably not pur- And it's your intention, as far as, you know, it's probably not pertinent, but I'm gonna ask it anyhow, is the design of the building, it's basically keeping that shed type of roof on it? You're not gonna alter the exterior? I mean, obviously you're gonna finish it, you know, but, um, but it's going to be done in, you know, and I, I should say tasteful because taste is up to the person, but, you know, I assume that there are certain codes that, you know, as far as the color and that type of stuff, that it needs to be and you need to be aware of that. Okay.
Yeah, we'll be very sensitive to that. I mean, obviously we want something that blends in and that's kind of the, you can see the, the plans on the house, that's the theme is, you know, let's blend in and, and that's the goal.
Here's the reality. You know, we've got the scenic St. Croix and recreational Riverway rules and those primarily focused, I would argue, on a lot of cosmetic type issues. And that's, you know, probably that's because what nine out of 10 people notice.
Mm-hmm.
We've started to focus a lot on the water quality issues and erosion control and, and screening and things of that nature. So, I mean, the, the reality is that if you were to get approved and you go down there and you take it too far, attention's gonna be drawn to it and pressure's gonna be put on every applicant that follows you, is the reality. So, you know, we're trying to be good stewards and we're trying to balance the reasonable rights of a property owner at the same time. So I guess I'm just making a blanket statement that, you know, error on the side of caution, uh, if, if we can get over this hurdle.
Absolutely. We're sensitive to that.
Yeah. The cutting of the trees and, you know, all that stuff, make sure you're following our ordinance and...
Yep, absolutely.
So in this application, you're not, are you gonna remodel this or just put two courses on it?
The plan would be to eventually remodel as well.
So you'd have to come back and get a building permit for that?
Correct.
Not to us, though.
No, but I mean...
To the building official.
Yep.
Yep, correct.
Correct.
So... Well, I don't know that we necessarily prepared to make a decision on that particular item, but we've got all the items identified on that. So maybe let's move on to the primary structure?
Sure.
So the, the primary structure, and John, I think you started this, the footprint is very, very similar to the existing footprint with the exception of the proposed future, future addition, correct?
Yep, that is correct.
Uh, the, you're, you're putting more of a pitched roof on there than what exists now and over the northern portion of the home, you're gonna have a bonus room slash office area.
That is correct.
But the maximum height of the structure is less than 35 feet. I believe it's 34 feet.
34, yep.
Okay. So I had heard some concerns about the future addition.
Okay.
So I think we should probably just hit it head on.
Yeah.
You obviously, if you're, if you're gonna add on, you wanna try to capture some of the benefits of being on the river there with some views. So you've, it looks to me like you've moved it back as far as you can or, or within a reasonable proxy, approximation of that, but still have it connected to the existing structure?
That's correct.
What would determine if you did that future addition, if you don't mind me asking?
Funds.
Okay. So it's not to do with, okay, that works. John, do you have any thoughts on that one?
Um, Mayor, the, um, for the record, it should be pointed out that the, you alluded to it, but I'll read the, the dimensions, I guess, for the record here. Uh, the future ma, master bedroom suite to be built on the southeast side of the existing building is proposed to be set back about eight feet from the existing home, which would still not be in compliance with this 50-foot setback. So you would, uh, it, while it's better than the existing home, it's not in compliance with your 50-foot setback. There, in your, in your code, um, there's language that states that substan, substandard structures, if they are to be enlarged, um, it should only be permitted on the side of the structure facing away from the river or bluff line. So there's, you need, you'll need to consider that as you deliberate on the approval and approving the variance.
John, I'm more familiar with Lakeland, but it, it seems to me that we allowed some horizontal expansion of non-conforming structures. That's my recollection through the variance process. So I guess what I'm asking is, is it, is it reasonable? Is it consistent with decisions that, that either Lakeland shores or neighboring communities have made in the past from your experience?
Yes.
Okay.
Would be consistent with, with others that have been approved.
Okay. Council comments?
So how, when you add that to your, to the end of the, south end of the house, how, how close do you then, what, what is the size of that proposed master bedroom suite?
I'll defer. Michael's the architect.
Uh, if I remember correctly, I, because I just have the phase one plans here, I believe it was like 22 feet by 22 feet.
And that then, is there a walkway between the two?
Correct. There's, there's a little link that kind of continues the existing hall, which is on the, the backside of the house. And then that ties into the bedroom.
And how close does that then bring you to the property line of that massive building that sits to yourself?
15 feet, I think. Just a lot further than...
Uh, it's actually 29, 29.6.
I'm sorry, the setback's 15 feet.
Yeah.
But from the property line, it's 29.6.
We comply with both side setbacks.
No, I was just curious as to...
How tight that gets.
Yeah. Because you're pretty tight on Jerry's side and to the north.
And where's, where are the setbacks on?
15 foot side yard. So that is from the overhang, correct? Are they including, what do you have for overhangs? I don't know that it includes overhangs. Is it foundation overhangs? Foundation?
That would be to the foundation.
It's foundation, right, not overhang?
Typically, I, I have, I don't know that it's written in that much clarity, to be frank, but typically what we're looking at is the foundation footprint when we're looking at this.
Okay. So you're improving a non-conforming structure, but you're increasing the height? And there's potential that the footprint to the south increases the non-conformity? These are basically our issues, right? Impervious surface, that requirement's met. I represent the city on the WOMO and I know there were some questions or concerns drainage-wise that I think they found some limestone deposit in the northeast corner that maybe prohibited any type of a retention area or depression area. I, I think there was some thought of maybe some French drain further to the west. I don't know if, if they made a recommendation regarding that.
Yeah, our engineers edited that.
Afterwards.
Due to those soil boarding results.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just can't emphasize that enough. If you go up and down the river, pretty much every property owner, you know, has to deal with the sloping bluff line. So the more water you can keep from going over that bluff, you're just saving yourself some heartache down the road, so...
For sure.
The more you can deal with that. And then, as I recall, the structure on the southeast corner, down near where the new addition's proposed, that has kind of a spillway in the event of a, of a large rain event. And that that potentially does go over the bluff. I don't know if there's any opportunity to... And you're in good hands between John and Mike Eisensee, you're in very good hands. It just, you know, it just makes me nervous. Anytime you're sending water over the bluff, it's, it's not a good thing. But if you've, if they've both reviewed that and they're both comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it.
So Mayor, to clarify, Bo, I did have a conversation with Mike Eisensee. Uh, on the, they're meeting their stormwater infiltration requirements with the project as proposed.
Yeah.
Uh, and that basin is on, uh, it's kind of south of the driveway, west of the home in an area, open area there. However, a, a large portion of the roof on the north side does, will, will not make it, will not flow to that basin. And so I've made the recommendation in my report that, uh, that the applicant consider constructing just a very shallow depressed area in the lawn on the north side that will...
Allow infiltration.
Allow some infiltration. And even, even though there may be some limestone in that area, anything that would keep kind of the more routine storms from going over the bluff would certainly be a benefit. So that is a recommendation that I've made in my report. And then Mike Eisensee concurred with that, although he didn't specifically put it in his report.
Okay.
John, can I ask you, have you heard anything from the DNR?
You know, I haven't. I called the DNR representative here once about a month ago and I didn't hear back and I didn't see anything in what was coming through Kim that came from the DNR. So I called again today and again left a message. And so I haven't heard anything back from the DNR, which is a bit unusual, you know, for these river bluff properties that typically like to chime in. Some of the things that we'll talk about tonight are things that, uh, that the DNR commonly scrutinizes, one being the building height. There'd be some mention of, you know, screening the building and that sort of thing. I'll read through some of those requirements when we get to that point here. But, though we'll try and keep ourselves on the right side of the DNR's concerns, but it's always better when they're here to express them for themselves, so...
Right, yeah, that is a little alarming.
Mayor, council members, I will add that, um, the DNR, they were sent the plans. So they had all the, the initial plans when the variance application came through. And it's my understanding that one of these pre-application meetings was held about a year ago, John?
Maybe not that long ago, but, but...
For this property, the DNR was involved in that?
Yeah, the area hydrologist attended that meeting. It was preliminary, but, but she was there, so... Okay.
Have we talked, have we talked anything? Excuse me, Tim. Go ahead, Tim.
Looking at it, you have on there...
A new deck or is that the, the screen porch on the back?
That's existing.
Existing?
Yep.
So there will be no deck coming off of that? It's just gonna stay enclosed with the existing?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
John?
No, I'm concerned about the DNR not having responded and I recognize that that's their responsibility, not ours, but I think it, the, their silence and their lack of response makes me very cautious about proceeding a whole lot further without their input. And, um, I recognize that they don't have the final say, but they generally speaking are, you know, good stewards of the river and attempt to be people that, uh, try to live up to the standards that are set forth in the regulations. So, um, I'm concerned about that. And, um, I'm also concerned about the addition to something beyond the original footprint of the house. I don't mind the, the going higher, but the idea of expanding the footprint along the river is something I think we should, that shouldn't be treated lightly.
Is there gonna be a lot of trees taken out, down for to add on to this?
I don't know, I don't think there's any.
No trees? So they don't just miss area following a storm after the project?
Most of them fall before.
There, any additional comments or I'll close the public hearing and we can move forward with the next part of the application?
So Mayor, Mayor, um, I think matter of order, I don't think you, we opened the public hearing.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
Uh, but, um...
I always did it opposite and...
If you wanna move along, then I think the next thing that I would suggest we do is I can hit some of the highlights and more of the highlights of the staff report, refer back to your code. It's a little dry and mundane, but I think for the record, we should probably do that. And then you can open the public hearing.
Perfect, thank you.
So you're, you're welcome to stay standing or sit down, whichever you prefer, but this might get a little long and boring. I'll try not to go too long. I know how the mayor likes when an engineer drones on, so... I'll try and stay awake. So Mayor, as was mentioned, um, the, uh, this is a substandard structure. I'd like to just briefly read through a part of your code, which is only about a page long that addresses substandard structures in the Shoreland District and how they should be treated. Uh, this is section 153 dot 011, which says, "All structures legally in existence prior to the effective date of adoption of the Bluffland Shoreland Code that do not meet the structure or sewage treatment system setback requirements or other dimensional standards of the code are considered substandard structures and shall be subject to the following conditions." I'm gonna read, I think, six conditions here. "Substandard structures that contain non-conforming uses shall not be enlarged or expanded." Now, I'm an engineer, not a zoning person, but this is a conforming use, as I understand it. It's a residential property, so they're proposing a residential use. Sub, B, "Substandard structures and substandard sanitary facilities shall be allowed to continue." C, "In no instance shall the extent to which a structure or sanitary facility violates a setback standard be increased." D, "An extension, enlargement, or alteration of an existing substandard structure may be permitted on the side of the structure or facility facing away from the river or bluff line." E, "Any alteration or expansion of a substandard structure which increases the horizontal or vertical riverward building face shall not be allowed unless it can be demonstrated that the structure will be visually inconspicuous in summer months as viewed from the river, as determined by the city council after a public hearing." F?
John?
Yes, sir.
Will you read that one again?
Yep. And this is, this is item E. "Any alteration or expansion of a substandard structure which increases the horizontal or vertical riverward building face shall not be allowed unless it can be demonstrated that the structure will be visually inconspicuous in summer months as viewed from the river, as determined by the city council after a public hearing." F, "Exterior decks attached to the structure which do not extend any roof or foundation may be permitted to extend laterally and in parentheses, parallel to the river or bluff line, end parentheses, at the same setback as the substandard structure if said deck is visually inconspicuous in summer months as viewed from the river and the deck has no roof or building foundation." And G, "If a substandard structure needs replacing due to destruction, deterioration, or obsolescence, such replacement shall comply with the dimensional standards of this chapter." So those are your substandard structure requirements out of your code. So getting back to the staff report dated October 5th, or rather dated, I guess, September 1st for the October 5th council meeting. "The applicant is proposing to construct and remodel the home to include a new height of 34 feet at the tallest point measured from the grade at the front entry." And to just pause and point out that there is a, a walkout in the back of the home. So this is measured from the front. Current height of the home is 22 feet. The proposed height, 34, does meet the current sta, uh, structural height restriction. Uh, the existing two-stall garage will be removed and a three-stall garage attached and this location does comply with the 15-foot side yard property line setback. We mentioned the bedroom suite again. I don't know if I need to do that one again, but it's about the setback. It, it improves the setback, but it still doesn't comply with our 50-foot requirement.
John, I have a follow-up question on that. Where would that setback be in relation to the neighbor to the south?
You know, I don't recall that the survey shows the adjoining...
I was just looking at the reduced ones, but I thought there was an aerial and now I'm, I'm not finding an aerial.
And I guess I'd have to ask the applicant if they can help with that. And I guess I'd have to ask the applicant if they can help with that. Answering that question, I don't know.
Any idea where that puts you? Yep, come on up.
It looks like this is the existing house next door. But it doesn't say how far back.
Right. I know the house to the north probably is less than 50 foot off the bluff line. I just don't know if the home to the south is as well. You know, trying to keep a consistent plane, for some reason that helps me if it does. Okay, go ahead, John.
There is language in your code somewhere that, I don't know if I'll be able to put my hands on it while we're sitting here, but it reads a little like that, if it's in conformance with the adjoining properties.
Consistent with the neighborhood.
You have some latitude there. The proposed plan calls for the pitch of the roof to be changed from 612 to 1212 to better handle runoff to the gutter system and for better load control. And in general, the proposed plan does indicate the existing foundation will remain as is. Front entry will be modified with a new frost footing. And the, the existing exterior walls will remain in the same location to be remodeled for new window locations.
John, can I interrupt you there? And ask somebody from the applicant to stand up, because I would like to drill down on that. And I'd like to make it a finding effect in the resolution if the council decides to move it forward. So to be very clear, the existing foundation is staying. Okay. So the, the floors on the street side main level, if you will, are staying?
Yes.
The sidewalls, are they staying?
They're staying to the point of remodeling them to configure all the new window openings.
Okay. All right. So we're not going to drive by one day and see straight across no walls?
Roof will be off, the garage will be off, and the roof will be off of that section.
Okay. So we just had this situation happen to the north where we approved something similar to this. And they had, they had, I believe, the best intentions to keep their foundation. And when they demolished the house and got to looking at the foundation, they realized it didn't make a lot of sense to put a brand-new house on an old foundation. But I'll be honest and say, had we known that it was a complete tear-down and a complete foundation removal, you know, at that point, there's really no excuse not to conform and to meet the setback. So, you know, what happens if you find yourself in a similar situation? And that's why I'm saying I would want it to be a condition of, of our finding. So that if that situation presents itself, we got to start over. You got to come back. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. John?
So then Mayor, there is another, there's a section here of the staff report I think I will skip over. It's the review criteria. But the variance request section, there's a table there that I think there needs, might need to be one correction. I'll let Kim cut me off if I'm wrong here. But I think the future master bedroom suite should be listed as a 20.3-foot variance because it is in the, it is in the bluff line setback. Otherwise, the rest of the variances are nicely summarized here in this table. I do have an engineer's memo, which I'll go through briefly in a minute. That's mentioned next. The other agencies that have jurisdiction and have been asked to weigh in are the Middle St. Croix WMO and the DNR. And they've both been mentioned earlier tonight. There is a letter from the Middle St. Croix WMO in your packets that I'd like to pull out and refer to. This is dated October 2nd from Mike Eisensee, the WMO administrator. And this project does qualify for a full WMO review. And I believe that the board has reviewed this project. Staff presented their review findings. And the approval is given on one condition and two, two technical recommendations. The one condition being that the final plans for the bluff be reviewed further by the WMO.
The path?
I'm sorry, for the path down the bluff. Yep, for the bluff path. And, and we talked about earlier that because that wasn't included in the first original application, we're not considering that here tonight.
Right.
The path is not included in the approvals you may give. And the technical recommendations include the following. The infiltration basin discharges toward the bluff path when full. The bluff path design should minimize grading and the design and materials should safely convey water and resist erosion from stormwater flows. In other words, when, when this basin does fill up, it's going to overflow over the bluff and right down the path. And so there's a potential for erosion there. That's technical recommendation one, that that be considered and addressed. Second one has to do, again, primarily, and this is longer, so I think I'll summarize it by saying we've already talked about the north lawn area and that north roof face, you know, to do something to maybe infiltrate or slow that runoff before it goes over the bluff.
Okay.
So those are the two technical recommendations and the condition recommended by the WMO. So that I'll just refer quickly to the engineer, the city engineer review memo. This is the one that has, is on SEH letterhead dated September 15th. Again, it was based on the original submittal. There have been some revised documents submitted since, primarily with additional information relating to the path. But what I'll touch on here without reading the whole blasted thing is, is that in summary, this project does fall both in, in the jurisdiction of your Bluffland Shoreland ordinance and your floodplain ordinance. A grading permit is required for the construction of the path. And so if you do, if you do consider a motion or a resolution to approve the project this evening or the variance this evening, we would ask that you make that a condition that the applicants apply for a grading permit. And there's another comment here about the St. Croix River elevations not being labeled properly. I didn't see that that correction had been made yet, at least not in the stuff that got sent back to me. So, and then comment nine addresses, as we talked about previously, that the raising of the, of the boathouse requires a conditional use permit. So that should be made a condition of your approval tonight if you give it. And item 10 talks about impervious surface calculations. Now, on the original submittal, the impervious surface, the proposed impervious surface is 15.1%. The existing is 11.1%. So it's a slight increase, but still under the maximum of 20%. Now, we just need to get those numbers updated when the path information is reviewed, because I don't believe those numbers were updated and this may not reflect that. But for the record, this will, the applicant knows the path is considered impervious. And so that'll need to be added to those calculations and they'll still need to be under the 20%. And
John, can I ask you on that?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm thinking back to my own situation. I just put a path in. And my path is pervious. It's all natural material. It's all grass. It's, so I'm just wondering if that's
Yeah, it's not going to be concrete.
Right. So it's, but it's, but it is proposed gravel, dresser trap rock gravel.
If it's gravel, then, then yes, definitely. If it's, if it's grass, then no?
Right.
Okay.
Yep. If it's green, green, you know, grass or even wood chip trail would not be considered impervious. But gravel is where that distinction is drawn, so.
Okay.
And as I say, you may not, you may be just fine. You'll be at something more than 15.1%, but it very well could be, you're still under the 20s. So this is a more for the record thing, you know? And then again, a comment about the shallow depression on the north side. The, we have talked about the fact that the house is about 22 feet from the bluff line now. I think that's about it, because I think we've covered a lot of ground up to this point. So council can certainly, you know, certainly answer any questions on that report if you have any. But I think we've covered most of the rest of the content of that, of that memo. So with that, I think we're about to the end of the staff report. The recommendations in the staff report would be if, if council does consider approval, that at a minimum, the following conditions be made a part of that action. And that is that the current foundation and existing exterior walls remain as is. And might add that if they are to be removed, that they need to return to the council for subsequent approval. Variants shall be recorded at the Washington County Recorder's Office. And that all fees and escrow dollars due to the city are up to date. And finally, the applicant submit additional design information relating to the path as a separate grading permit. And a conditional use permit is mentioned here, but that really relates to the boathouse, not the path. So those conditions and then a few others have been mentioned here tonight. So with that, Mayor, be happy to answer any questions if council has any. Otherwise, I think it's an appropriate time for you to open the public hearing.
So I've got one more question, just because I want to be clear. So if this resolution were approved by the council tonight, you have the CUP issue relative, well, we're not dealing with the CUP this evening, are we, relative of the boathouse?
Except to make it a condition of your variance approval.
Okay.
But not approving a conditional use permit, yeah.
And council can decide if they want to make that at the staff level or at the council level, correct?
The grading permit is at your discretion. The conditional use permit has to come back to the council.
Okay, so they'd have to come back next month?
Yep.
Specific to the
Well, not necessarily the next month. The next, there's the same submittal and, you know, notice periods and everything that have to happen. It may or may not work for November.
So I apologize. I don't know. It's more complicated than it seems like it needs to be, but. So they would come back for the CUP after a submittal, but is that specific to the height? And no, it's not, nothing to do with the height?
No, that's
Because that's part of the variance process this evening?
Right.
So that's specific to the flood?
Proofing.
Proofing?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
So the two outstanding items would be the conditional use permit has, having to do with the flood proofing of the boathouse using alternative methods, and the grading permit having to do with the path.
Okay.
Those are the two items that will follow.
Okay.
One question, John. In your letter that you, it was on your SEH letterhead dated September 15th, you indicated in paragraph 16, the proposed project would demolish the existing home. I take it that that was something that you were contemplating at that time, but has since been corrected?
My understanding at that, at the time of my review is that the home would be demolished to the foundation, that the foundation was all that would remain at the time construction was to start. So if that's not clear, that, or if that's not true, that was a misunderstanding on my part, so.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that that's not where we're at. Where the walls, the foundation, existing foundations being used and the walls other than being altered for windows are going to be the same sidewalls?
That's what I heard tonight, too. I'm sorry for the misunderstanding.
Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't confused by that.
Want to make an additional comment. And I'm again going to reference some previous experience at Lakeland. When the Hubbard property was approved, screening was something that we talked about a little bit. But frankly, the applicant took on their own responsibility. And I've challenged people to drive up and down that river and try to talk, or try to find that house, you know, that received so much public attention. Mansion on the river, you know, it's very, very difficult to see. And yet, when you're on their property, you enjoy the river and you can see the river. So there's a way to accomplish both. So I was starting to struggle with the potential addition as well. Unless we can, from my own point of view, unless we can talk about some screening and, and what can we do to, to minimize some of the visual impact from the river?
Can I speak to that?
Absolutely.
If you, I don't know.
Would you mind just for the record, so we're picking you up?
To just speak to that, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look from the river at my house. You literally can't see it with all the foliage. So during the summer months, which is one of the caveats in there, you literally can't see the house from side to side.
Yeah.
So I think that's part of the concern. So I want to make that clear that as it sits right now, you literally can't see that house.
Yeah.
And the house to the south is in clear view. Not to pick on anybody, but that's the reality of the situation. I think that was important to point out.
Yeah. And, but at the same time, I would argue that there's some deferred maintenance relative to tree trimming and, and those types of things that you, you know, according to our ordinance, you have the ability to do. So I guess I appreciate that it's, you can't see it now. When you start to do your, your landscaping and your maintenance, I just would, you know, I'd like to have some discussion about making sure we do everything we can to minimize the visual impact and to, you know, prevent the removal of the screening.
Yep, absolutely. And I'm on board with that. I just wanted to point out, I don't know if anybody's actually seen the house from the river.
Yeah, I have.
Okay. I think you can speak to that, too, at the current state. So just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Thank you. Shall we open the public hearing? No more comment at this time. We'll call the public hearing to order. And the purpose of the public hearing is to, again, review what's been presented and to have council discussion. And, help me again, John. Will you then close the public hearing and take a vote?
So Mayor, I've seen this done a couple ways. I think by the letter, the public hearing can simply be, if there's no one here to speak, a time of silence. It's just an opportunity for the public to come to the podium, ask questions, express concerns. Once you're satisfied that all those questions or concerns have been voiced, you can close the public hearing and have your council discussion after the public hearing's closed.
Okay.
And I do see that done informally in small towns, so you can choose.
All right. Well, we're headed down that path, so let's go ahead and, and do that. Is there anybody here that would like to comment on anything that's been presented so far? Have we received any written comments?
We have not. Mayor, council members, I will just note the public hearing was published in the paper and the letters were sent out to property owners within 500 feet.
Okay. So seeing none, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll look for additional council discussion and/or any action that we'd like to take. Tom, Tim, thoughts?
I guess I wrote down a few things here. I guess one of my concerns is not hearing back from the DNR. And that the, the new footprint of the master bedroom suite is going to encroach on the bluff line. And then not hearing back from, again, the DNR is, you know, and I guess I haven't been on the river or seen what the house looks from the river. You know, because if you take a look at your, the backside of the house and you hold that up and you, you see the, the size being expanded, and then the roof line on the one end, I guess I just, I personally don't like to see it encroaching the river.
Which issue are you speaking to? The height or the
Well, the height as much, I guess I'm just worried about the eyesight from the river.
Visual impact?
Yeah. And then the master bedroom suite, that's, you know, the existing structure, we can do nothing about. As long as they conform and keep it there. But the new structure that is going to be less than the 50 feet, you know, on one corner, it's 29 or 31, and the other, it's 30, 33 feet. And the other thing is the, the boathouse, the current septic situation there. I'm a little, have you guys used that this summer? I guess that's a concern for me right now of where the, the septic is flowing and what's going on there.
Yeah, I mean, I would argue that it's, it's a failed system and that it shouldn't be used until it's brought into compliance. And we can certainly make that a condition, that it, that it not be used until it's brought into compliance.
So those are just some of my concerns.
All right. Well, I'll speak for myself here. I appreciate all the information. I appreciate all the staff work. Appreciate the applicant's work. These aren't easy, you know, they're not. We're really trying to do the right thing. We're really trying to do the right thing. Having said that, I think that you can accomplish what it is you're wanting to accomplish and still do it within the spirit of the rules and the regulations. If you maintain good screening, maintain good foliage on the bluff and the slope, it's in your interest to do that anyways, otherwise you're going to have erosion issues. We've seen it up and down the river. So I'm comfortable with the primary structure and I'm more comfortable with the proposed addition with what I just said about screening. The boathouse guesthouse, I was 100% on board with, based on my understanding that you were below the flood level. Knowing that you're already, you know, a foot above, which is how you would rebuild a structure based on if it were demolished and/or destroyed and then reconstructed, that makes that one a little bit harder for me. I can certainly appreciate your concern that you'd rather have a little bit more buffer than one foot, but going up another two feet, and frankly, that was the only thing that I recalled the DNR commenting on or having a little bit of heartburn on. I'm wondering if we could either reach a compromise with one foot, which still causes me a little bit of heartburn, or if you'd reconsider that part of the application. That's from my point of view.
And I think that's something we have to, two cores, if you go, it's three.
Sure.
You probably have to go two, which is actually going to be 16 inches instead of 12.
Okay.
To clarify.
Okay. Good point.
And to remind the mayor that part of the conditional use permit is not in front of you tonight.
But they could put half on.
So it's certainly appropriate to have your discussion, but it's not part of your action here.
So the conditional use permit, again, for clarification, because I thought I clarified it a minute ago, that that was just the flood control, but you're also saying it's the increasing of...
Well, okay, so that's, that is a good point. Yeah, you raise a very good point. So it is, I don't know how you do one without the other, but yeah, the elevator...
I think we'd just be redundant, probably.
I think you might be right.
We could certainly include it in our consideration on the variance, because it's changing the structure of a non-conforming, or it's changing the height of a non-conforming structure. So maybe if we're just redundant, we're safer. John, what's your thoughts?
Well, I'm probably right where Tim's at. You know, I'm concerned about the additional master bedroom suite is really my only concern. I think the house is obviously going to be more visible from the river no matter what if you're going to raise it up another 12 feet, the roof line. So I would expect that, if I remember right, and I could be wrong, but there aren't a lot of large trees there. I mean, it's kind of overgrown in front of the place. I don't think of the huge, you know, cedar tree or bigger, not necessarily big trees, but...
Mature trees?
Mature trees that are of any size, I guess, but I could be wrong. But anyway, and I, having, you having lived on the river, I, it's not like you're new to the river. So it's, you know, it's, I know that you would have the best interest of the river in mind, but I am concerned about two things. One, that we haven't heard from the DNR, which may be just their tough luck, but sometimes that can bring on things that we don't necessarily want to bring on. And two, you know, the additional master suite, which to me is, you know, if you've got a guesthouse plus three bedrooms, I don't see the hardship involved. So if, you know, and I realize hardship is defined in many different ways or is somewhat nebulous at times, but to me, it's something that I don't think is really necessary and but I certainly, without the master bedroom, I would have no problem voting for, you know, approving whatever variances we have here.
For the primary structure, how about the three cores?
Oh, yeah, I don't have any problem with that either.
You're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Did you want to comment?
Just quickly.
Yes.
John, just as far as the number of bedrooms, you know, part of the new design, and I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but one of the bedrooms is actually going to be a mudroom, just because of the way the house was designed. So it's really currently going to be a two-bedroom until I do that master. So the future thought is kids, grandkids, having space, two bedrooms, that to me is a real factor, so.
So...
Just a thought.
So the reality of what you're saying is, once the construction is completed, that...
It's three-bedroom.
It's two bedrooms without the master suite.
Correct. It's going to be a two-bedroom house in the interim.
Right.
Because the current third bedroom will be a mudroom. So just a thought.
That helps. Tim?
Going back to the boathouse, so the intention there is just keeping the same structure, just jacking it up, not changing the footprint to the overhang or can lever or roof line. I guess I have to, you know, talk about what John said. I agree with John, but I guess, and Brian earlier, that, you know, we want to work with you guys, we just don't, we want to be good stewards of the river, and I know what you guys do, too. We just want to be publicized, if you know what I mean there, so.
Because all it does is make it harder for everybody else, then.
Yeah.
That's the reality.
And the existing, I guess what, is there a septic layout on there here? Was there a drawing?
Yeah, it's on...
I guess...
And that's already been installed?
Yeah. So I was looking at, okay. So I was looking at, that's not a hardship as far as the...
Here's the tapes.
Yeah.
Here's the field over here.
Yeah. So that's far away.
All right, well, let me, I don't know that we have a consensus here, but let me just make sure that things that there is a consensus on are in the resolution or noted for the resolution. So an element of our decision or a finding of fact would be that the existing foundation and sidewalls will stay, will remain, and that if the foundation in particular were to be deemed insufficient, that the applicant would be required to come back to the council. A grading permit would be required, and from my point of view, could be handled at staff level relative to the path. A CUP would be required for the flood control relative to the boathouse/guesthouse. And/or, we would include in the CUP, the total increase in total structure height, whether it be 16 or 24 inches. I think that's yet to be discussed. I would also like the condition to be that screening will be maintained to minimize the visual impact from the river. Okay? John, were there other things that you think we have a consensus on relative to the resolution?
Yeah, so you mentioned the grading permit already.
Mentioned the CUP.
Mentioned the CUP. Did you, did you mention the others that were listed in the staff report?
I think I'll say that generically, that the conditions of both the staff report and the DEMO review be met?
Okay. Yep. I think that covers those.
I guess I can think of one thing that I'd like to have added is no off-street parking. They'd have to park on sites, we don't have to...
Construction during the construction.
During the construction. Couple of years ago, when we had, yeah, you weren't there, we had that.
I was there.
Yeah. We, they parked on the street and blocked the road, did damage to the road with equipment, and then they, you know...
I think to be fair, we have to, we have to say that you'll minimize that. So the situation we ran into was just a lot of staging. In fact, at one point in time, there were 20-plus vehicles and trailers parked out along Lakeland Shores Road, and it made it very, very difficult to pass.
Neighbors couldn't get by, emergency vehicles couldn't get by if we had, so that was a big concern.
And that's private property on both sides of that road, so, you know, there was some damage caused to neighbors' property. So, you know, we recognize that there's some large vehicles that likely can't be pulled onto their property, but we'd just like you to be sensitive to the neighbors and minimize the construction impact. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because Tim checked.
No, that's John now.
Well, we're, the two of us, we'll be guys on the MO.
They're in trouble.
Just trying to be a good neighbor, you know? Tom?
I'm fine with what you've added in.
So I think, from what I've heard so far, I'm probably the only one that's comfortable with the application as presented, with the exception of I'd prefer to see 16 inches, two layers of block on the boathouse/guesthouse. So the overall current structure height will only increase those two courses, so you're not going to change the pitch of the roof on the boathouse as well. And as long as you maintain the screening, which is a condition of approval here, I'm relatively comfortable with the proposed future addition. I don't know that we have consensus there, but I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Excuse me, Mayor, council members, there were, through the discussion, there were two more conditions that you had mentioned, detail regarding that septic...
Yes, thank you.
And one other one...
And that that system won't be used until it's...
Those two.
Yep.
Did you want to add that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So that doesn't, that wouldn't, would that increase the drain field then size, or would that be counted as...
No, that was already factored into the drain field.
Okay.
And Washington County's the one that...
Takes care of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm not trying to put any of us in an uncomfortable situation, I'm just trying to advance it.
Yeah.
If we can have additional discussion, if we can amend the motions, if we need to amend it, I'm just trying to advance it. So I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution with the conditions that have been mentioned and noted. Is there a second to the motion for discussion?
I will second.
In a perfect world, because, you know, we're all working together here, we're all neighbors, so in a perfect world, if people aren't comfortable with the resolution as it's been put forward right now, let's talk about alternatives. But, you know, I think we're open to that. So I don't want to, I don't want to be painting anybody into a corner with that resolution.
I'm just not comfortable with the master bedroom suite addition, and I don't think it falls within the purview of what's, what's necessary to show for allowing a variance of that kind. And for that reason, you know, I can't vote aye for the resolution.
Can't support the current motion?
Current motion.
Or current resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, one of the things that bothers me just a little bit about it is that it seems like, and I understand, we all do things when we have, some people just go out and borrow the money. Some people, you know, wait until they have the money and then they do it. But I think what bothers me the most is the fact that it's, you know, it's, it's being sold to us as a future possibility. And I, you know, I don't really know what that means. You know, if it just means when he has the money, it's going to get done, then it's probably going to get done in the next year or two. But conceivably, we're talking about something that's, you know, not going to get done, could be five years, 10 years, or if the grandchildren don't materialize, whatever.
Well, and I, I think, John, that, you know, even if ownership transferred, this will be recorded, and, you know, a future property owner would be able to add that room at a later date should it pass our council. So to your point, whether it's one year or 25 years from now, if we approve it, it could happen at any time.
I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we didn't approve it at this particular time, I mean, everything but that, and that we... And not to slow things up, but that we contact the DNR concerning that particular issue, okay? Because I would like to see their input on it and just see what their reasoning is. And certainly, if the DNR doesn't care, you know, it's not going to bother me any. I mean, that's fine, that's fine, I'm prepared to go ahead with it. But I just, I would feel more comfortable on that specific issue of the master suite to, if it was to hear some feedback...
To hear some feedback on it, yeah. I don't want to, and I think that's fair. I think that's a good idea. There's two things that come to mind. Coming back on that issue, if we were to not include that tonight, I would ask procedurally, how could we pick up where we left off on that issue so that we're not, you know, unduly causing expense to the applicant to resubmit for a new application, new posting? Is there a way that we could procedurally do that?
Procedurally, the proper way to do this is, this would be tabled, to come back for the next meeting.
Tabled until next month?
Yes, and the whole thing. You couldn't approve part of this and move forward and hold part of it back. One suggestion would be at a condition of approval, that you get the DNR's approval on the master suite.
So that was my second point, is, just in one, just a second. That would be my second comment, is that I don't want to give them, first of all, I'm bothered that we haven't heard from them. I think we've given them every opportunity, and certainly, the protocol has been followed, and I don't know what's happening, why we're not getting communication. That concerns me as well, but frankly, I put the onus on them, not on us. We've done everything we can. To John's point, I would feel better if we were having a discussion that involved them. I wouldn't want to make it a condition that they have to approve it, because frankly, I think that gives them an unreasonable amount of power.
Yeah, and I don't think I was suggesting that that would be, I'm more interested in what they're going to say.
Yeah.
You know, and what, and conceivably, you know, how that might impact my decision. You know, I mean, I've had my own difficulties with the DNR, so it's not like...
Right.
I'm going to defer to them. It's not like I particularly care what they say. I guess I'm just interested in what they would say about this. And, you know, if it's something that's happening up and down the river, where we're going beyond the footprint, then, you know, that's fine. But their automatic response may be, you know, it's beyond the footprint, you can't do it, okay? Or you shouldn't do it, okay? They don't have the power to say, we can't do it. I just would like to know what they're going to say, and...
I think that's fair. You had a comment?
My comment was just that, when we submitted this, it's been almost eight weeks. We have to, as citizens, we have to adhere to a pretty strict timeline. I'm just saying the DNR, basically echoing your comment, they've had longer than typical, based on the date that I submitted. It's been almost seven, eight, it's been almost eight weeks.
All right.
Can I just ask, what's your construction, if it was approved tonight, what is your construction tomorrow?
What's your schedule? Are you hoping to get, to start pulling a permit right away?
Two weeks, yeah, we'd apply for the permit and we would like to get started so we could get the foundation for the garage dug in before winter.
And just from my perspective, you know, I've owned this house for a year, and I really want to try and do it right. I want to follow all the guidelines, and we've spent money on engineering, we've done everything we can, we've provided it to the DNR. If I lose out on a bid as a contractor and I didn't do my part, it's kind of my baby. It's my business, that's their business to take care of that. No offense, but I feel like you're being overly sensitive to what they might say about your decision. They've had their opportunity, they've had seven weeks.
I know they've had their opportunity. I guess I, their expertise is what I was looking for more than anything else.
What, did you have feedback on the Brockton project from the DNR?
To my recollection, not a lot of feedback, a little bit of feedback.
And that's a complete tear down.
Well, frankly, that wasn't what was approved, so that's...
Well, everything, well, the plan showed everything but one wall being gone, so...
But the foundation was the...
Well, right, the foundation wall, the house gone.
Yeah.
Really humongous two...
John, do you recall what there was?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't. Enough projects have gone by, I guess I don't specifically recall, but this is the first one that I recall them... But this is the first one that I recall them being non-responsive.
Right.
So, I believe there was input from them.
And obviously, I stated it, that, you know, I feel like we've done our part. Having said that, the more we get along and the more we work together and the more we respect each other, I don't want to end up back at the State Supreme Court. That, you know, that costs a lot of time and a lot of money and it wasn't productive. So, we've, we've really had a pretty good relationship with our area hydrologist. It's concerning that we haven't heard from her. So, I'm just going to throw out a couple ideas. We wouldn't have to wait a full month. We could call a special meeting. So, you know, we could certainly, if, if schedules allow, um, table this until next Tuesday. You know, that type of a thing. We wouldn't have to wait a whole month if the council was willing to reconvene earlier. Uh, so I'll just throw that out there. The other option, and Kim, you'll have to tell me if this is possible, is that we could vote on it without the addition. Uh, and we could look at waiving as many of the fees as possible to bring that portion of the application back. Uh, you're coming back for a CUP anyways and the grading permit, I think we can issue at the staff level. So, there would be a delay on that portion, but I'm thinking that maybe that doesn't cause you an immediate hardship.
It does concern me as a homeowner, because I'm, I'm making the decision to plow ahead without having the full piece of the puzzle saying. I'm trying to make a decision based on, you know, do I want to do this?
Right.
And if I don't have approval, that's a different ballgame. And I'm not trying to throw you guys up, but the reality is I'm struggling with the hangup on it, to be honest. I just, I don't get that. I mean, if you look up and down the river, I had a house that was 6,000 square feet on the river. This is nowhere near that. It's nowhere near the visual that that house has. And you can't tell me that house wasn't in the bluff line. Can't tell me my neighbor's house to the south, that's two stories wide or massive, that this doesn't fit the lot with the addition. I just disagree strongly.
Well, I've seen new construction homes that meet the setback, you know, are 30 feet tall, 35 feet tall, and are very visually conspicuous, but they meet all the requirements and didn't require variance itself.
Right.
You know, I mean, I kind of echo your, your comment.
Right.
Some of us are new to the council. We've been involved, but, you know, so there's different council members that have approved different things and so on. I guess my thing is the addition and, you know, so one resident comes to me and said, "How could you let that monster be built on the river?" And, you know, and I don't think it's a monster. But, you know, the master bedroom suite, yeah, you could turn it and put it to the, to the west, but then you'd lose the view of the river. You know, so is that a hardship having that hanging out there on the end? And, you know, that's the honest truth right there. And I guess I'm not waiting for the DNR, their final verdict, but I do want to hear what their input is on it. And I guess it just goes back down to, I don't want bad PR.
Um, this is a small site plan, which you probably have a similar one. But, um, there was a discussion about, you know, the neighbor's house here. And if we just extrapolate that contour as a bluff line, you know, the distance here to the distance to the addition is approximately the same. What we're trying to do is we knew we couldn't build in front of that line of the existing, so we pulled it back. There are trees in front of that with the idea of keeping it screened. But also by separating it slightly, we wanted to break visually the length of this big facade there. And it changes in its material as well. So, we're trying to, trying to be cautious and aware of.
Tom found an aerial.
Yeah, I found an aerial here. It's not very good.
It's part of the.
Eland Design Map. Yeah. Yeah. It does, uh, the second aerial shows, uh, that one, there's one on the next page. Mr. Mayor, a little bit bigger one, that I believe shows you the bluff line.
Yep.
And so.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's in keeping with what I'm saying here.
Yeah, the bluff line appears to jog to the east as you get to the south.
Right. So, I think that distance is.
Right, it.
It appears to be in line with the southern structures. Maybe even slightly setback the proposed addition. Well, we can do a couple of things. We can vote on the resolution and see what happens with it. We could, uh, somebody could offer a friendly amendment to the current resolution. Uh, but what I'm hearing from the applicant is that his preference is that we reach a decision this evening.
I would like to take a couple minutes to confer with the personal team here, if you will.
Certainly. Uh, well, with that said, um, should we take a brief recess?
Yeah.
Take a five-minute recess?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Building inspection was usually with a cup of coffee.
All right, I'll call us back into session out of recess. Don, we're back live. So, to recap where we left off, uh, we were debating amongst the council. There's a motion and a second. We're debating a resolution with a number of, um, conditions. I believe the applicant took an opportunity to, to maybe consider some of our discussion. Would you like to comment or, or offer anything to the council?
Sure, I'm going to defer to Jennifer.
Jennifer, could I have you go to the podium? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Just, just wanted to revisit, if we could, um, could we revisit item E of the, was it zoning conditions or?
John had read.
John had read.
Yeah, from our.
Yeah.
Coordinates. John, do you have that handy?
She did have it handy at one point, yeah.
Yeah, right here, yep. You want me to read it again?
Would you?
Sure.
Want clarity on that?
This is, uh, substandard structures, section 153.011 of the city's code. And, uh, substandard structures shall be subject to the following conditions. And letter E is any alteration or expansion of a substandard structure which increases the horizontal.
Or vertical riverward building face shall not be allowed unless it can be demonstrated that the structure will be visually inconspicuous in summer months as viewed from the river as determined by the city council after public hearing.
So, we were curious if, at all, a condition could be made that, um, that we can demonstrate that it can't be seen. That the master addition, we will, you know, put up, you know, orange construction, whatever it takes to have the council feel comfortable that it can't be seen in the summer months, which we're now in fall. But does that, is that a possibility as a, can we can do it as a condition?
I, I wasn't necessarily thinking of it that way, but that's what I was trying to accomplish when I speak of the screening issue.
Yes.
But she's, I think, specifically speaking of the master suite bedroom addition.
That's right.
It would make me feel a whole lot better if, in fact, we, um.
Went through some type of an exercise?
Uh, at least if we could be more than just, you know, okay homeowner. I mean, I, I row on the river and, you know, you can go, it doesn't make a difference. People have trees that are 150 feet tall and there's not a limb until you get to the top of, you know, 100 feet, you know? That type of thing. I mean, they've consistently cut vegetation in order to get a better view of the river. Or maybe they like people looking at them. I don't know which it is. Right. So, you know, I know, and, you know, to me, it's, as we were talking privately here previously, I, you know, people come and you never know whether they're coming with the best intentions or whether they're, you know, just trying to get it through. And then they do what they want to do, okay, type of stuff. And there isn't, you know, it becomes costly to stop people from cutting trees. I mean, I've, I mean, what do you do after they cut them? You know, you plant a little tree and 15, 20 years later, it might actually hide something. And so, I mean, that's, Mike, if we could have some assurance that this master bedroom was going to be, I don't really care what you do with the rest of it. That's kind of up to you and your conscience and how you feel about the river, okay? But if, you know, then I could feel a lot more comfortable about voting aye on this particular resolution. If we had some assurance, I don't know how that we would get that.
Well, we would make it a condition, uh, in the resolution, um, that it would specifically meet the requirements of our zoning code, item E. Is that fair, John?
And I'm just talking about the master addition, okay? Leave the rest up to you. Yeah, people seem to do what they want to do, you know.
John, do you want to offer that as a friendly amendment to my motion and, and Tom second?
Yeah, I'll be glad to offer that as a friendly admission. That the, um, master suite, uh, addition, um, which falls within the 50-foot setback that is required by the city, that the variance be granted upon assurances of, um, that the vegetation screening in the warm months of, um, the summer specifically, but, you know, spring through fall, that it not be visible from the river.
Can I offer a comment? Rather than assurances, I'd like it just to be conditioned.
Okay.
That it will be rather than assured.
Okay.
That's a little bit more definitive, I think. Is that fair?
That's fair.
So, um, I would accept that friendly amendment to my motion. Tom, do you accept that? Okay. Is there additional discussion or are we maybe a little bit more comfortable?
The colors?
What's the color of the structure? Is it going to be an earth tone color?
Correct.
Okay.
And the roof color?
Brown.
Is it going to be metal or is it going to be?
Oh, not an asphalt.
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 Yeah.
We do have, they, believe it or not, they've given us some swatches. So, if you need some swatches, your neighbor, as your neighbor, down the way, I can give you the, uh, the 50 that are on it. And you can see the various shades, but.
At this point, those are an example. I don't know that we've adopted that, but, but they're trying to give some direction there. Any other comments? I guess with that said, I'll call the question and ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Schroder.
Nay.
Councilmember Pashaw.
Aye.
Mayor Zeller.
Aye. Resolution 2017-10-01 passes. Comment?
I guess I was thinking the original. I was snoozing on them, so I would approve it under those conditions.
I don't know how you note that, but with, with the conditions.
Let's take another roll call vote.
All right, let's redo the vote.
Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Schroder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pashaw.
Aye.
Mayor Zeller.
Aye. Passes. Welcome to the neighborhood. Sorry for the brain damage. It is what it is. If it was easy, everybody would do it, right? So, we will see you though, uh, you'll deal with staff relative to the grading permit. And then you'll come back, uh, on the CUP issue for the flood control. And then we're just going to restate the 16-inch, uh, height increase. Okay?
And there's a timeline to that CUP or?
Timeline, and Kim's better informed on that, but it's the same type of timeline as the variance process was.
But we can resub, we don't need to resubmit in a, I can work with you.
Yeah, application and fees and so on.
Application, CUP, six weeks, public hearings, all that.
Do I have to do public hearing too?
Yep.
That's just to get the flood.
Alternative floodproofing.
That approved.
Yep. So, you can submit the grading permit at the same time, but that doesn't follow that lengthy process. So, that's staff review.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Um, I'm going to move on to, we added item 4B. And, uh, that is the appointing of Judy Tetzloff, uh, as our new treasurer. And, uh, appointing Tom Nidzwicki as our deputy treasurer. And we're keeping Tom as deputy treasurer primarily because he's working with us on, uh, the use of his software, um, until, to get us through this, uh, this budget cycle. Um, and if he is called upon for any training or questioning by our new treasurer, we'll pay him. He, he had proposed that we would pay him $60 an hour. He had initially estimated that would be 10 to 15 hours of work. They've been working diligently all evening and he said that it's not going to take much after, uh, after this evening. So, I'd make a motion that we make those two appointments. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion? When she comes in, we'll, we'll introduce her or after the meeting, we'll. But as long as they're making progress, I guess we'll continue on. So, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify with a sign of aye. Aye. Those oppose, motion carries. Move on to council and staff reports. Road commissioner report.
Nothing new. Anybody gotten any complaints? I haven't had any complaints. I plan on doing a little brush cutting on, uh, Third Street North, on that sharp corner there, right by Scanlon Place and David Jarvis, I think it is, and, uh, and Steve Larson. It's really overgrown there, okay? And since the brush dump is open on Saturday, I can just dump it then.
Okay.
But I, I haven't heard, I did some on our own road, uh, three weeks ago. And I haven't, I haven't seen anything. That pothole in front of Tim Schroder's house is getting marginally deeper. And I probably before winter ought to dump another bag of tar in there, but, uh, it hasn't cracked or anything. It's not, so, um, I, you know. The, the only thing that I, I worry about is the fact that, uh, street, street, to redo streets costs a lot of money and I sometimes wonder whether or not we're budgeting for it, for the future. And, uh, I recognize we have a certain, uh, sum in our reserve account for those, that purposes. It doesn't come close to doing probably what we need, but, uh, I think it's something we all ought to be aware of. And somebody eventually is going to have to bite the bullet and, uh, you know, say, "We need to put more money aside in order to, uh, to be prepared to do some major road repairs." Mr. Perotti got the contractor there on the one part that we had done, uh, just, uh, on Second Street North, I guess it is, or Quinlan, which is, uh, I've forgotten which Q it is. Um, it's not Quinlan. It's right there at the end of Lake, Lakeland Shores Road, uh, where we had that part done.
Yep.
They came back and did a much better job on, uh, filling in, uh, on the homeowner's lawn and grading it. It looks, it looks good. The grass is grown, so that looks good. And, uh, so I would approve if we need to paying them, but, uh, whatever they, we were holding back in reserve.
I think we've already approved that, if I'm not mistaken.
Other than that, they seem to be in good shape.
Okay, great. Well, skip treasurer's report. We'll come back to it. Clerk Zoning Administrator.
Uh, I only have a couple of things. The mayor, council members, the, uh, your head judge from the previous election, Joan Helt, has agreed to be your elections coordinator for 2018.
That's awesome.
That is very good news. We are going to work on finding a location, which she also suggested, the church. I will contact them. We do have some time, but yeah, she has agreed to take care of that. And then I just wanted to take your, or take a minute to thank your city engineer, John, for all the help that he provided with this application.
Yeah, I think you guys did a great job of identifying all the issues. Really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to mayor and council reports. I'll go first. WMO meetings progressing nicely, uh, making quite a bit of progress as a whole, complying with the, um, you know, requirements that the governor encouraged or passed. Um, and then the only other thing I would mention is that John and I were able to take a little bit of time and. bit of time and load up all of the remaining Lakeland Shores files that were in Lakeland City Hall basement. And we moved all of those plus two cabinets and those are being stored in my outbuilding right now. So, we're 100% out of Lakeland City Hall. Let's start with you.
For your department, we are in the process of writing grants to get new air packs for the firefighters. I'll give you just a bit of background. We have, the East Metro Fire Departments have been trying to standardize them all, so, you know, if we go to a fire, we can refill on somebody else's truck, not necessarily ours. We have, our air packs are, how shall I say this? If they haven't expired their usable date, they're very close to it. Jim Stanley is in the process of writing a grant. I believe he has got it approved for, I'm not going to speculate right now, but it's a large portion of that. It's a safety issue with our firefighters and hopefully we can get this, he wants to get, he wants to get them ordered this month. And so, I've got a special meeting next week to get it, address it from a finance standpoint. It'll come out of equipment, so there won't be any kind of repercussions into the budget at all. It'll come out of the equipment budget, which is already there, but it's an issue that we've been working on in a lot of cases, trying to get things standard with all of our mutual aid partners. And this is kind of the last really big one that we, we're trying to get sorted out, so hopefully that'll get done. And other than that, I don't have anything.
Great, thank you. Tim?
I have nothing.
Okay. John, any more?
No, other than those files, I don't have a permanent home in the barn of our esteemed mayor. And so, if anybody wants to, you know, in a coordinated effort, go through some of it, I'd be glad to join them. Otherwise, I plan sometime once the weather turns cold to taking one box at a time over to my house and trying to figure out what's in them. And won't throw anything away without somebody else's guidance, but, you know, it's stupid to have that material just sitting there.
Yeah.
We have no place...
We don't even know what we have.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's, I'd be willing to give you a hand, John, on that kind of stuff. I mean, it's, I think the biggest problem is getting it at least in silos, you know, I mean, you know, so you can, can deal with it at that level and this is building stuff and this is road stuff and...
And I did have, and I think Kim may have as well, some real preliminary discussions and it's been a couple of months with Lake St. Croix Beach, that they may have some space in their warehouse for a nominal fee where once we get it whittled down to, you know, probably one cabinet, we could probably work something out with them to, to house it here, which would certainly make more sense than my garage.
Are we going forward, still hard copying everything or is most of our stuff electronic now?
Oh, I'm working on absolutely electronic.
Yeah. Because that changes the dynamic greatly at that point as to, you know, we, at some point, 2017 paperwork will be the oldest we have.
Sure.
Hopefully, so, okay.
Okay. Kim, I've got a quick question for John. Would you mind seeing if Tom and Judy are available quick for a treasurer's report and then we could conclude our meeting? John has shared a concern relative to our overall road improvement budget.
Okay.
And I have no way personally of quantifying or qualifying. There's got to be a kind of a linear, linear foot cost basis and you know how much road we have, or maybe you've already done a more in-depth analysis, but I share John's concern. If we're not adequately funding our road improvement fund, then we need to have more discussion along those lines.
Sure.
You know, this year, we're going to be 10,000 under budget. I have no problem, you know, allocating that money, but if that's just a drop in the bucket, then we need to have a, we need to have a more in-depth conversation. We could also have a conversation and it wouldn't be a popular one, but, you know, some cities pay 60% of the street and assess the balance. And I think that's something that, you know, is worth a discussion, to have that discussion, but I think you've got to have it years in advance of actually implementing it so that it's fair, you know, the, the people that just got a new street versus the ones that are up next year. We've got to have some fairness there. So, if you have a report like that or if you just even have, you know, what our total number of miles are for roadway versus, you know, kind of a worst-case scenario, if we had to replace everything?
Yep. Well, we, we have better than that. We have a spreadsheet where we have projected out. I don't remember how the one has been updated last, but it projects out like five or 10 years, which is usually what we use for a budgeting tool.
And I thought based on that, that we were in pretty good shape. Am I wrong?
I'm sorry that I didn't bring that file with me. I felt, I felt like you were not in terrible shape, but you're running, that you're behind that projection.
Okay. So, let's have a workshop on that.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Can we do that?
Yep.
Whether it's next month or, I got to sign this.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And mayor, I'm sorry I stepped out during staff reports. I did want to mention that, have you, or asked maybe, have you gotten a start on talking about your comp plan?
The only discussion we've had is that there was a proposal by, from Mark Nagel to, to help us with that process and I want to say that he had, and this is a good question for Tom, I think he had proposed approximately $2,500. So, actually, Kim, maybe, maybe you and I can reach out to Mark for a little bit more clarification and I don't know if we want to look at other proposals. I, I've worked with him in the past and I have a lot of confidence in him, but...
I believe his, what you had indicated, his quote was $35 an hour?
Yeah.
And that he could do it within what your budgeted amount?
Yeah. So, do we have that budgeted, Tom, for a comprehensive plan update? Or would that come out of the general fund? Thank you.
It typically would come out of the long-term improvement fund.
Okay.
And come out of the money we get from the cable commission.
Okay.
Is where it would come out of typically because, I'm drawing a little bit of a blank into just what we've got.
You haven't forgotten about us already.
Yeah. I'm losing it.
Another Girl Scout cousin, you sure?
She's on four hours with Judy and she's, she's going to be fantastic, let me tell you.
Great.
So, where I wanted to go with that is on the short term, so there's the comp plan and there's a local surface water management plan. In your case, there are two separate documents, but the one is a requirement of the other. And we are also required to update our local surface water management plan in response to the WMO's watershed management plan that was updated in 2015. We were supposed to do that within two years. So, the first step, I learned recently from Mike Eisenstein that he's statutorily obligated to review our old plan and provide comments and recommendations, which he would do, which he has to do at no cost to the city directly, of course he...
Part of our membership.
Yep. Yep. So, with your permission, I would like to forward our old plan to him and get it started, get it in the queue for him to review.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then that'll at least get the ball rolling.
Okay. And then thanks for bringing up the comp plan. We'll work a little bit with Tom and Judy in terms of the budget and then we'll reach back out to Mark Nagel and maybe look at some other, what other communities, how they're accomplishing it. But I do recall from the last time I went through this process that some communities spend $30,000 and some get it done for a lot less. There's not that much changing in Lakeland Shores, so we ought to be on the low end of that scale.
From what you said earlier, I can't remember what it was that you said that you'd contacted them. It seemed pretty reasonable to me and it's, it sounds like, if we can farm that out, let's do it and let's, let's nail this guy down.
Get it crossed off the list. Okay, excellent. All right, now, Tom, we're back to you for...
Yeah, we do not have a specific line item in the general fund budget for it.
Okay.
So, I think the idea was to take it out of the community communications or the cable, cable money where we have, currently have $14,000. We're going to be getting another $5,000 or $6,000.
Okay.
Maybe even a little bit more because of the discontinuation of the contract with...
The three-channel thing.
Yeah.
Tom, was that factored into our $10,000 favorable budget this year?
No, not at all.
Excellent.
Because we, any money we get from the cable commission...
We don't budget that.
We put in the long, we don't budget for it.
Okay.
Right.
Perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, in terms of the estimate for this year, the favorable variance is very close to $15,000. So, I think that's going to stick. So, I think we're in great shape from that perspective. There really wasn't much activity this month to talk about, so it was, you know, a good month to not focus too much on it, you know, and, and, because I just, I just spent some time with, with Judy. We started around 5:00 today, but we had a conversation over the phone earlier this afternoon and we have loaded QuickBooks on her laptop.
Excellent.
We have installed Lakeland Shores on it.
Excellent.
And we actually made one transaction, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, that check I picked up, that was an $8,000 building permit.
Oh, excellent.
This afternoon.
Great.
And so, well, and then Tim gave us also a check, you know, so we entered those two. She has to take it to the bank and deposit it, but she'll do that.
Wow.
So, we're on, the transition is, is really moving along very, very well.
Excellent. And I, I just really want to thank you, Tom, and I was traveling while some of, you know, the emails were coming in, so that's why I was a little spotty in my communication.
Yeah.
But you've, you've generously offered to help us through the software transition and any additional training or questioning, questions that Judy may have. Judy, I'd like, in a couple of minutes, if you'd introduce yourself to the rest of the council.
Okay.
Because they haven't had that privilege yet. But, Tom, I just really want to thank you for, you know, kind of scrambled there, I did, towards the end and I'm just really happy with the way that this transition's happening and, and I don't know how many years it was that you served Lakeland Shores. Do you know?
Yeah, I think it was about, I think I started in 2000, so about 17.
17 years, well.
Yep.
I think you and I have worked together, I think you and I have worked together over 20.
Oh, yeah.
And I just can't thank you enough for, you know, your work and your knowledge and...
Recycling, you want me to take it?
You've really helped a lot, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'll be around, so.
Look forward to seeing you.
You know where to find me.
Thank you. I guess one other thing before you go, we have to approve the final budget. Can we do that in November or do we have to wait till our December meeting?
No, if you want to do it in November, you can do it in November.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So, we'll maybe look at, at doing that, just in the event that we have a real light agenda for December.
Oh, sure.
That may be another meeting that we elect not to conduct.
Oh, yeah.
But for, for, just a reminder for council, the one item that I would like us to have a discussion on or additional consideration is if we want to decrease the mayor and the council's compensation back to the previous level. And I think that was about a $3,000 annual savings. And to John's comment earlier, I'd be comfortable moving it over to streets or we could eliminate it from the budget as a whole, but I'd still like to circle back on that if we can before we approve the final.
Yeah.
Okay. Judy, do you mind just kind of briefly introducing yourself and, and then we'll get out of here?
Okay. Judy Tetslov. I'm excited to get involved in Lakeland Shores. I've worked for the city of Oak Park Heights. I currently work there full-time right now and I spent 10 years. And I worked for the city of Maplewood nine years before that and so been government a long time, all in accounting. And so, I'm anxious to keep on working for you and that's all.
Well, we're excited to have you and appreciate your willingness to work with us. Part of my discussion with Judy and make sure that I didn't overstep my authority, but I had indicated that she would not have to attend every meeting. She's certainly welcome to attend a meeting, but, you know, we'd probably look at three, four times a year as opposed to her needing to be here every meeting, but that's something we can, we can talk about. So, it, it may be the situation, you don't see her every month, but she's available via email and cellphone. We'll make sure we get that contact info out.
Yep.
And look forward to working with you. Glad to hear you guys had a real productive night.
Yep.
We tried to run the meeting a little bit longer so you'd have some more time.
That was good. That was great.
Chalked the time a little longer.
That's right.
Yep.
Well, I think that concludes this evening's business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again, Tom.
We also like to get ourselves in a hand with a hammer because it feels like we're going to start...